Amber Ballard, and I will be stepping in this evening for Brandon Atwood, who was not able to make it for the meeting. Just a moment. I'd like to ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? None? Ms. Campas?
Ms. Ballard?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do roll call, I'm sorry. Would you like to do roll call before we do that?
I can fill it in for you, or you...
You can fill it in for me, I trust you, Julie.
Alrighty. Ms. Ballard?
Present.
Mrs. Rarica?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
And Ms. Towner?
Present.
All right. Item 1.04, the minutes from our previous meeting. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Campas?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
All right, item 2.01, our Rising Star Presentations. This is our favorite part of our board, and I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Westendorf to come up and read about our students.
All right, good evening. Our first Rising Star this evening I would like to bring down is Jose Garcia Garcia from Sharpsburg Elementary. Fourth grade student Jose Garcia Garcia is Sharpsburg Elementary's Rising Star for November. Jose is an absolutely wonderful student who truly shines in every way. What his teachers admire most about him is his incredible work ethic and his kind, caring heart. Jose never has to be asked to help others. If he sees someone struggling, he steps in willingly, especially to support classmates who are still learning English. His compassion and willingness to serve others makes him a true leader in the classroom. Jose's leadership shines through his actions and his words. He encourages his classmates daily, celebrates their achievements, and recognizes their growth. He is selfless, respectful, and polite to both his peers and teachers. He always takes the time to say thank you, and he approaches each day with a positive attitude and a readiness to learn. Jose is not only a hard worker, but also a thinker and problem solver. He consistently seeks opportunities to improve himself as a student and a person. His teachers are honored to have him in their classroom and are inspired by the example he sets for others. Jose is, without a doubt, a shining star and truly deserving of this Rising Star recognition. Congratulations. Our November Rising Star at Norwood View Elementary is Hugo Freeman. We are thrilled to announce that Hugo Freeman has been selected as our Rising Star Student of the Month. Hugo has been part of the Norwood View Elementary family since kindergarten. As a first grader, he has shown remarkable progress as a strong reader and mathematician. Hugo demonstrates commendable work ethic in class, always striving for excellence. He arrives prepared, actively participates in discussions, and maintains focus and attentiveness at all times. His strong desire to succeed is evident, as he is willing to put in the extra effort needed to achieve his goals. Hugo is a friend to all. He gets along well with everyone. He is fun, thoughtful, and trustworthy. He understands how to think of others and be empathetic. Hugo's kindness and respect extends to his teachers, classmates, and all staff members at Norwood View. This makes him a joy to have in the classroom. We are immensely proud to recognize Hugo as our Rising Star. We have no doubt that he will continue to shine brightly in the years ahead. Keep up the great work, Hugo. Norwood View loves you. Our Rising Star this November at Williams Avenue Elementary is Jakari Howard. We are proud to nominate Jakari Howard for Williams Avenue's Elementary's Rising Star Student. He is a hard-working and focused learner who consistently gives his best effort in every lesson. Whether working independently or in groups, he pays attention, follows directions, and seeks to understand the material, which shows in his strong academic results. His favorite subject is science, and he brings curiosity and enthusiasm to experiments and class discussions, often asking thoughtful questions that deepen everyone's learning. Beyond academics, Jakari is a caring friend to all of his classmates. He loves seeing his friends at school and is quick to include others during activities, offering help without hesitation. He also looks forward to gym class, where his positive energy and teamwork make him a joy to have on any team. His combination of dedication to learning, friendly nature, and enthusiasm for school life make him an outstanding representative of the Williams Avenue Elementary community. Congratulations. The November Rising Star at the Norwood Montessori School is Callaway Zinn. We are excited and proud to announce our Norwood Montessori Rising Star for November is Callaway Zinn. He is a shining example of a PACS leader at the Norwood Montessori School, exemplifying our three school rules: taking care of ourselves, other living things, and the environment. Cal is new to our school this year, and he has quickly built wonderful connections with his classmates and teachers. It's like he's been here for years. He is friendly and an enthusiastic learner who comes to school each day, ready to do his best, and he has a smile that makes you want to smile back. Cal loves to share his knowledge and stories, especially when they involve cars. His positive attitude and kindness help make our classroom a happy place for everyone. Congratulations, Cal. You are truly a role model and a Rising Star. Our November Rising Star at Norwood Middle School is Meredith Smith. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Meredith Smith as the Rising Star for November. As an eighth grader at the middle school, Meredith makes it her personal goal to embody the school's pride by consistently treating everyone around her with respect. As a member of ATP and taking some high school-level courses, she consistently exceeds expectations and, as a result, has earned straight A's throughout her middle school career. These academic efforts have earned her a position in the National Human Honor Society at the middle school. Along with her academic efforts, Meredith has a tremendous drive to be the best that she can be. This talent, effort, and leadership flows over into silhouette practice, shows, competitions, student council, and cheerleading. Norwood Middle School expects great things from Meredith in the future, and its students like her should make Norwood Middle School and Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations. Our Norwood High School Rising Star for November is Silas Marshall. Silas is an extremely hard-working student. He is currently excelling in two math classes: honors precalculus and honors geometry. He is always one of the first students to speak up with answers or ideas and isn't afraid to try, even when he isn't 100% sure he's correct. Silas always wears a smile, even when wearing a boot, and is a pleasure to have in class. He brightens the classroom every day and is a joy to teach. What makes Silas stand out even more is his attitude and curiosity. He approaches challenges with enthusiasm and determination, setting an example for his peers. His willingness to take risks, ask thoughtful questions, and stay positive through setbacks shows a level of maturity beyond his years. Silas doesn't just learn, he inspires others to learn with him, and that's what makes him truly exceptional. Congratulations to Silas for being selected the Rising Star for Norwood High School. Our district athletics Rising Star for November is Christian Dominguez. Christian Dominguez of Boys Varsity Soccer had an impressive freshman campaign. He finished second in the Miami Valley Conference with 46 total points. He led the conference in scoring with 18 goals and finished third in assists with 10. He was the spark that the varsity program needed with the graduation of a prolific strifer, Graham Metz, from last season. During his two seasons as a member of the Norwood Boys Varsity Team, Graham scored 55 total goals. With his total this season, it seems like Christian is well on his way to having the same type of impact on the pitch at Shea Stadium. This season, he was named First Team All Miami Valley Conference and received consideration for Conference Player of the Year. We are looking forward to seeing Christian's star continue to rise here at Norwood. We can't wait to see his star shine bright in his future. Congratulations. Our district creative arts Rising Star for November is Chuk Bhan. Chuk's artworks shines with bright colors and expressive lines that make every project feel alive and full of emotion. Her unique style captures movement, feeling, and creativity in a way that makes her art stand out among her peers. Chuk finds inspiration in everyday life, turning simple images into vibrant works of art. Her art reminds us that creativity has no limits and that self-expression can be both powerful and joyful. Norwood Middle School is proud to honor Chuk for her great talent and hard work. Congratulations. And our district staff Rising Star from Williams Avenue Elementary is Mrs. Carmen Munnlin. Williams Avenue Elementary is thrilled and honored to nominate Mrs. Carmen Munnlin as the Staff Rising Star for the month of November. A dedicated student assistant, she goes above and beyond in advocating and supporting our students. However, her kind and understanding approach does not end with students. We are blessed on the daily to work side by side with such a kind and caring individual in Carmen. She exemplifies something we could use a little more of in this world: leading with your heart. Congratulations, Carmen, and thank you for your care and dedication to the students of Williams Avenue Elementary. Congratulations. The board members would love to come and congratulate you all, and we will also, of course, take the appetatory photo. So make sure you guys stay up here.
At this time, we're going to ask all the Rising Stars and your family and friends to follow Ms. Taylor out into the lobby for some family and friends' pictures. Thank you all for coming.
I had these included, so I'm glad this was updated. Do you want me to just read this part tonight?
I wouldn't even do it, because I'm going to say a little bit about it. I'm going to say a little bit about it and explain it.
Star winners. Thank you, guys, for coming and supporting the students. All right, moving right along to item three is Personnel. I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Mary Ronan.
I will thank you, Vice President Ballard. Under 3.01, resignations/retirements, we have, number one, we do have a resignation. And number two is a retirement. Dawn Attaberry, I want to thank the district. Actually, I want to thank you for your many years of service to students with disabilities. Item number three, we do have a termination during probationary period. Then, under 3.02, employment, I would like to welcome Brandon Jake Johnson, our Assistant Treasurer. He's out here in the audience. Welcome, thank you for joining us. Then, we have two classified subspositions: one in maintenance and one is an educational aide. So welcome to the district. Item number three, we have a change of status for an individual. Item number four, we also have an employee going out on medical leave. And right below that, Avenue's for Success, they're still doing some additional hiring for our great after-school program. And item five, pupil activity contracts, we'd like to welcome our baseball varsity assistant, Dylan Jones, for spring sports. So that, thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the items listed under number three, Personnel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Campas?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
All right, moving along to number four. This is the Education Committee report. I'd like to turn this over to Alice Rarica.
Okay, we have Sharpsburg fourth graders going to Green Acres Water Testing Facility, the fifth graders going to the Cincinnati Museum, and another set of fourth graders going to Cincinnati Observatory. Norwood View second grade going to Cincinnati Museum Center, and Miami Township for Nature Exploration Awareness. And their specialized class going to Kroger to shop for a classroom cooking project. And the Montessori, third and fourth graders going to Xavier University for a women's basketball game. I'd like to motion that we approve these filters.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Campas?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
All right, number five, Policy Committee Report. I'll turn this over to Mike Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Chesson.
Oh, yes, could we look at 4.02 again? It's next year's school calendar.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, we did miss it.
I am not paying good enough attention.
We were so excited about those policies.
Sorry, Chris, you have to wait.
Okay, we are approving the calendar for the 26-27 school year. I love it when this comes out, so we can all start planning ahead. Julie and Mary, are there any significant changes?
No, there are not.
That need to be noted?
No, but we did have lots of input in developing the calendar, administrators, teachers. We wanted lots of eyes on it to put together really the best calendar to meet all of our needs, and we wanted to get it out early so families could plan. But no, there's really been no significant changes from this year to next year. It pretty much tracks what we had this year.
Okay, one good one I'm seeing is the first day of school is August 20th. I know my own children were so upset that it was August 14th this year. So, hey, kids, it's almost a whole week later next year. But that just means you have to keep going later, but whatever. The kids won't care, they're going to be so happy it's August 20th. I motion that we approve this calendar.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
For items of discussion on this, I would like to see if it's possible, and it may not be, but we also usually get dates ahead of time for like our preschool preview and open house dates. I don't know if it's possible to find those out and include those open house dates on next year's calendar for families looking to get in there.
Before school starts, or the...
The ones that are usually in the January, February
Oh, the January.
Open houses, where the family's coming in for the next year's preschool and kindergarten. I'm not sure if those dates are possible to find out.
But we don't have them selected yet.
Okay, but we can update those online as soon as we have them?
Certainly.
Perfect.
But see, this was next year's calendar, so this is this year's calendar.
Right. I just wasn't, I wasn't sure if we picked those in advance or if we waited a little bit longer to put those out. So I wanted to make sure, because our families are always looking ahead for preschool planning.
We will make sure that's online, thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing I noticed, spring break's a little late, and it's the last week of March going into April, which is really late for us. So make a note, parents.
Might be a nice warm spring break then.
Right, a little bit later spring break and a later start date.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Campas?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
All right. Now we can go on to Policy Committee Report that I will turn over to Michael, which he will turn over to Chris. Ms. Chesson, can you take it away?
I can, thank you both. Tonight, we do have some policies and regulations for your consideration. As you can see, I think there's a whole page dedicated to it this evening. First, we'd like to rescind the Regulation Student Absence and Excuses, JED-R. The entire regulation has been rescinded because it has to do with student absences and excuses and loss of driving privileges, which is all part of House Bill 29. So we'll talk about that when we update our other attendance policies. Moving on, Board Policy Development and Adoptions, BF. This policy provides some flexibility for this entire policy review process, and allows for some editorial revisions and changes like association names and legal references to go on without a formal board adoption of that policy, but a summary presented to the board. The next policy, Student Absences and Excuses, JED. This policy is updated to reflect the attendance changes, removing the distinction between medical and non-medical excuses, or absences, rather, and allowance for the Revised Code 3321.043 for students to be excused to attend private driving training course. This begins our attention to an entire attendance overhaul, so you'll see several policies and regulations impacted by those changes. The next policy is truancy policy, JEDA. And this policy is updated to reflect several changes in the Ohio Absence Intervention and Truancy Provisions. We've been asked to create a tiered system in schools now to support truancy, and this, it's been presented now for school districts to begin the work with all of the changes being made by August 1st of 2026. So it reworks, again, our entire truancy system that we have in place for students. The next policy, IKE, is Promotion and Retention of Students. This policy is updated to remove the requirement RC 3313.609, and that a district or community should prohibit the promotion of a student that is truant for more than 10% of their required attendance days per school year. It removes that requirement for the district. The next policy moves a little bit away from attendance and onto cybersecurity, Policy EHC. This policy is updated to reflect Revised Code 9.64, requiring districts to establish a cybersecurity program that meets the state law requirements. This is something that our district has been working on. At this time, ODU will be presenting an artificial intelligence model policy by the end of December, and then schools will be asked to create a policy based on that new model policy to be compliant by July 1st of 2026 and to meet the auditor's requirements as well. The next policy is Policy Student Transportation. We're moving into a few transportation policies, EEA. And this policy deals with the updated to address the changes in the Ohio Administrative Code 3301-A3. So you'll see some changes in transportation. There are quite a few changes in transportation. This one just honors the meeting the timelines and the statutory requirements that are a part of a school district. The next policy deals with school bus safety programs, Policy EAC. This is also among the safety policy changes, talking about safety audits and those requirements. The next policy is Policy EACD, which is a policy that has a name change, drug testing for motor van drivers and district personnel required to hold a commercial driver's license. These policies with transportation haven't been big policies for our district since we don't, we are a non-busing district, we are a walking district. But we do now have some motor van drivers, and so it's important that we honor these policies as well. So this provides some changes that includes motor van drivers. The next policy is actually a regulation. It is drug testing for motor van drivers. So they pared down the language a great deal from bus drivers and included motor van drivers for that regulation. So again, that regulation supports the policy. Additionally, there's another regulation on transportation, student conduct on district-managed transportation. They've added motor van drivers. So not two changes to this particular regulation, but because they added motor van drivers, it's now of great interest to us as a district. The next policy also has to do with transportation about Criminal Records Check, GBQ. It covers the record queue. It covers the records checks that are necessary to be part of driving the motor van. Then, the next policy is the non-routine use of school buses and motor vans. So again, of interest to us because of the addition of motor van drivers. Policy E- So again, of interest to us because of the addition of motor van drivers, Policy EAD. It's not a policy we've had in place, but we will be recommending that to be considered this evening and also for December. Moving on, away a little bit from driving. Now we're going to talk a little bit about Health Education, Policy IGAE. It's updated to clarify that districts will comply with any parental opt-out or opt-in for our certain programming that we offer to families. And the only change is that there's a notation that it's not just state law, but also federal law. No change in the policy or in our work, but just including that it's now part of federal law. The next policy is the Use of Cell Phones and Electronic Communication Devices by Students, JFCK. So that's a familiar policy to all of us. We've been talking about that for the last couple of months. This is updated again to reflect changes in Revised Code 3313.753, prohibiting student use of cell phones during the instructional day, which was already a place in this district unless otherwise specified by the law, and to remove the ODU model policy. And that's one thing we hadn't done yet. That policy has been completely removed in the cellphone, this use of cellphone policy. So those changes will be noted in that policy. The next policy also deals with use of cell phones. It is the Emergency Management and Safety Plans Policy, EBC. So the only change in this is addressing cellphone usage during emergency plan. And this policy asks that districts create a protocol or procedures for that use in case there was an emergency, and that's something that our district is already putting into place at this time. The next policy is Professional Staff Assignments and Transfers, GCI. This is updated to reflect Revised Code 3319.173, requiring superintendents to assign teachers to positions based on the best interests of students. The next policy is the Inter-District Open Enrollment Policy. It removes the application deadlines for those families that are part of the military. So that's a change that you'll see evident in multiple policies, but it just allows the open enrollment application to, the deadlines to be removed for any active-duty members of the armed forces stationed in Ohio. The next policy is Moving into Reading Skills Policy. So this is Reading Skills Assessments and Interventions, Policy IGBA, and the regulation that goes with that policy. These are both updated to reflect changes in House Bill 96 to meet the reading requirements that we use, reading diagnostic assessments that are on the approved state list. And it's reflected in both of these policies that we will abide by that rule and also that we will make sure that we do use the diagnostic on all students K to 3 unless exempt under state and federal law. So that's what both of those have to deal with for our students. Moving on to some graduation work, Graduation Requirements, IKF. This is updated to reflect the provision from Revised Codes 3313.603, permitting boards to excuse a student from financial literacy graduation requirements if they met the requirement through another approved means. So we thought that was important if they came from another school, that we honor that work that they've done in another district. The next policy, Co-Curricular and Excurricular Activities, IGD. It's updated to reflect Revised Code 3313.536, permitting students in another district to have the opportunity to participate if it ever became available in ice hockey. And also, it has some changes for home-educated students. We don't currently offer ice hockey in this district, but who knows? Next, we have Interscholastic Athletics. It also deals with the ice hockey, or Policy IGDJ. It also mentions the ice hockey allowable portion of that work. The next policy is our Acceleration Policy, IKEB. And this is updated to reflect the new requirements for any of the gifted advanced-level opportunities that we offer to our students, especially in this case, it's for advanced mathematical courses. And we're quite confident that we're on the right track with our acceleration protocols in the district. The next policy is Reporting Child Abuse and Mandatory Training, JHG. This is updated to reflect changes to the youth suicide awareness and the prevention training and child sexual abuse education training. In the past, we needed to do that training with law enforcement and the prosecutors, but that part has been removed from this requirement. The training still exists, but it can be done in a different manner. The next policy is Programs for Students Who Are Gifted. So this begins a lot of changes in guidelines for gifted programming for our students. And we are working towards all, you know, following all of these different directions. They've made a great deal of changes about the goals aligned for, all the goals for gifted students have to be aligned to learning standards, how we collaborate about students. So this policy, Programs for Students Who Are Gifted, IGBB, takes care of that. And this has been a long time coming. They've waited a long time to make changes in the gifted world. The next policy is Release Time for Religious Instruction, JEFB. This is updated to reflect House Bill 96 requirement to allow a student to be released for at least one period per week, but no more than two periods per week if needed. The next policy, the next set of policies deal with our finances. The first one is Budget Planning. This is actually a name change for this policy. It used to be referred to as a five-year forecast. It's Policy DBD, and it's updated to reflect changes in the House Bill 96 that required budgeting and forecasting processes. I do want to note, based on the conversations at previous meetings, we've added a line for our use in the district that at the end it says the treasurer is responsible for preparing a five-year forecast for in-district use. So even though the state has made some changes, we still, at the request of the board, are maintaining our five-year forecast for internal usage. The next policy is also a treasurer policy dealing with revenues for tax sources, Policy DE. And Policy DE is updated to reflect House Bill 96 levy changes. So some terminology allows for it not to specify the types of levies, but just to allow the types of levies to be a part of our conversations. So they're adding some more flexibility instead of specifically sharing what kind of levy you're going to be running. The next policy also deals with some levy work. It is Policy for Tax Issues, FD, and also known as KBE. It's reflected to those same changes about the levy information. The next policy is Bidding Requirements, DJC. And this policy had some changes that we made, updated to reflect which contracts now require competitive bidding under Revised Code 33.13.946. And it's feasible that purchases over $20,000, that's our cutoff for that permissive language for the bidding process. And I'm sure in Julie's report, she might add a little more to that. The next policy is part of Construction Contracts, Biddings and Awards, Policy FEF. And it's updated to reflect revised bid grantee options for us. The next policy is Expense Reimbursements. It's updated to remove the prohibition of employees earning frequent flyer miles and other rewards due to new ethics opinions. So there was an advisory opinion release that talks a little bit differently about these previous prohibitive motions. The next policy is the District Records Commissions, Records Retention, Disposal Policy, EHA. This is updated to reflect the amended Revised Code 149.011, definition of what is a record. And in this policy, it outlines what a record is not. And you will see things like a record is not a personal note, a record is not an item. So it's more telling us what a record is not. And the policy that follows that, the Public's Right to Know, which is our next policy, KBA, also specifies a record, and it refers to records that are of importance to this board as public records. So it highlights that. The next policy is our Grading Systems Policy, IKA. And this was important to include language indicating compliance with the law for developing grading scales related to changes from House Bill 96. And in House Bill 96, there were some career technical course changes. And those are called CTAG courses, and those now carry a different kind of weight. So our Grading Systems Policy needed to reflect that. Moving on, our Policy for IND and INDA, School Ceremonies and Observances and Patriotic Exercises, is updated to clarify requirements for Recognition of Constitution Day. That is a day that we've always celebrated in this district and had some nice educational programming, but it's now just a part of our policy, so greater detail. So that concludes my report on policies this evening. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
That was a lot.
I didn't even take a break for you, so I apologize for no break.
That's so much. I had to make a couple notes because I didn't want to lose them.
All right.
On DBD, the updating of the five-year forecast. I know that that's something that we had discussed here, potentially maintaining for our regular standard. Is that something that we adopt, that we're going to adopt separately? Or do we need to make an amendment to it as written here? Or is that going to be separate for board policy?
So we've added a line at the very bottom. The last line of that policy says that we will continue to create a five-year forecast to use for in-district use, based on all of your recommendations from last month. So we're in good shape with adopting this. We had already added it in and knowing that that's the wishes of the board.
Perfect. And then the second one that I had was on JEFB. It says to choose one of those paragraphs to follow. That's on the religious exemption. There's two options listed.
Oh, those two options should not have come, but we will make a note of that and choose the permissive language that's appropriate for our district.
The second one that's more general, the ones, the per week, I think?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, perfect. So will that change will be reflected?
It still said choose one, and I had to make sure if we needed to vote on that separately and have it removed, so.
We won't. We will alter it, and then we'll share it out with the board. Thanks for noticing that.
Any other question? I'd like to make a motion that we accept this very extensive fall list of changes and recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I see that Constitution Day is September 17th. Is this also Talk Like a Pirate Day?
I'm sorry?
Isn't it also Talk Like a Pirate?
It is Talk Like a Pirate Day, so, and it's the day before my birthday. So it's a wonderful thing to celebrate, I think.
We can learn about the Constitution while talking like pirates.
While talking like pirates.
Our...
Yes. All right, Ms. Campous?
And this is, this is just the first three of our policies. So this will not be effective until after the board votes again in December. Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towne?
Yes.
All right, moving along to number six. This is the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and that is me. Pardon me while I open that real quick. All right, we have one request for usage of the Sharpsburg parking lot on Monday, December 8th, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Across the street from Sharpsburg is one of our local businesses owned by Maria and Billy Peace. And this is their Peace for the Holiday Event that they'll be hosting on Forest Avenue through the barber shop. They do a lot of really amazing things, and they do haircuts, back-to-school haircuts for our students and provide wonderful service for us. They have some parking limitations going on due to some work that the city's going to be doing, and they've asked for just the use of our parking lot only for actual parking. Their event is not going to be held on school property. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept that request as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Campous?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towne?
Yes.
All right, and then I do have a report from our very own John Peter. This is the update from kind of late October, early November. Two dead trees were removed. One was on Elm, on the side of the high school, middle school campus, and the other was on Marion Avenue on the side of North Norwood. The high school's cooling tower was drained, and the chiller was opened up for scheduled cleaning. All of the domestic water backflow preventer devices have been tested throughout the district. One unit required repair at Sharpsburg Elementary, and that has also been completed. The leaf box was assembled and installed on the dump truck in preparation for leaf collection. And the batting cage has been installed under Shea Stadium. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Peter, for that. All right, moving on to item seven. This is the Finance Committee. I'd like to turn this over to Julie Campous, our treasurer.
Thank you, Vice President Ballard. All four property tax bills that we've been watching and have been in the works for a year, passed through the Senate yesterday and are on the governor's desk for approval. Some of the more harmful provisions of the bill are: House Bill 129 includes all substitute and emergency levies in the floor calculations, which then removes all increases in inflationary growth. House Bill 309 allows the County Budget Commission authority to reduce any levy. House Bill 186 caps all property tax growth using inflation as a standard. However, the state is not adjusting their funding to use the same standard of measurement. House Bill 335 caps revenue growth on inside mills using inflation as a standard. When you include the above voted bills suppressing nearly all inflationary growth for real estate taxes and add the city's destruction of tax revenue from new construction, our property tax revenue is taking a huge hit. In the past, property taxes have been our only revenue source that has seen any growth. All other sources of revenue for us are stagnant. No business can run with stagnant revenues. On the agenda, the financial reports, the CFO report, monthly financials, and change order listings is attached for year review. 7.02 Appropriation Resolution, the budget for the current year. 7.03, a special education agreement for Maxim Healthcare to provide services for a student per IEP. 7.04, resolution to approve a modified tax budget. Hamilton County accepts a modified tax budget, which is a simplified form. So with the board's permission, we will go ahead and submit that modified form. 7.05, donations. Avenues for Success received their donation from Kroger for $759.58. Limley Yarling Management Company donated $400 for families in need during Christmas. And Norwood Little Indians donated $2,000 to the district with no restrictions, but we will use it for families that cannot afford preschool. 7.06, new account, to create a new account for PBIS revenues and expenditures. 7.07, fund-to-fund transfers, to transfer money from old senior accounts to the current senior account. And just for some more definition on the policy DJC, it is required by federal policy that any construction costs that are estimated to be over $75,000 needs to be bid out. But just unique to us, anything over $20,000 for any reason, the board has asked me to bring that to the board for approval because we do tightly control our expenditures here. So that is what is in our new policy also.
Thank you.
Questions on finance?
Thank you for adding the clarification on that policy.
Sure.
I appreciate it. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Finance Committee Report items as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say, I hope you all listened when she told you about all the property tax issues that just got passed. I mean, I guess there's a chance our governor could veto something, but it's super devastating. Prices go up, prices on paper go up, prices on electricity go up. We will have to buy a new furnace eventually. We will have to redo our roofs eventually. How are we going to pay for that if they won't let us get any money? How are we going to pay for teachers? How are we going to pay for the leak in the roof? We don't have one right now. I'm not saying we do, but eventually. It's absolutely devastating. It's absolutely devastating.
This will send, I mean, I think this will send a great majority of the districts in the state of Ohio into fiscal watch within the next couple of years. So we'll be in good company at least. This is not something about mismanagement of funds. This is nothing like that. You know, Norwood has always been just very, very frugal and very good with our money, and this has got nothing to do with that. This is, our revenues have just been cut so drastically on our main source of revenues, and it's happening to all of the school districts in the state of Ohio, and we're all going to be in really good company in fiscal watch. So we'll see what they decide to do with us then, at that point in time.
And if anyone wonders why we had to make a big deal with the city, and I know people still do wonder that, this is why. This is why. We have to watch every way that money comes into the school, and if our own city, who should be on our side, and on the side of our taxpayers, let alone just the schools, the taxpayers, they need to be careful what policies they make and how that affects everyone else. Okay, that's it.
It's basically like the state just went ahead and pulled the stick out of the wound without a plan for how to stop the hemorrhaging. So we know that property taxes are outlandish. We all pay them. It sucks, but they didn't come up with a way to transition the cost of public education before they did that. I have no problem with property tax reform. I have a problem with mowing over your schools to do it.
And they've never acknowledged, why are property taxes so high? Well, property taxes are so high because we give away so much free property taxes to commercial developments, and the state has not kept up with supporting public schools.
Well, they promised gambling funds from the casinos. They promised a portion of, of the CBD and, and like weed sales, any of the stores that are coming out from, from those that were supposed to be dedicated towards education or at least a portion of it. The state has not honored those promises and has left the burden to be on the taxpayer rather than the state, which is going to be very interesting to watch over the next couple of years, as we know it will happen quickly. It will snowball.
And not to mention those funds also support fire, police, and libraries. It's not just us.
Yes, they do.
Yeah. Every dollar they don't give to those things are dollars taxpayers have to make up for, and every dollar they don't make corporations and developers pay is a dollar we all have to pay.
Good way.
I can, I can have a fit right there.
It's a very passionate subject for us. But speaking towards passion, I would also like to say on a very positive note, personal thank you to everyone who made a donation, the folks who go to Kroger and set up their account. You can choose a charity to support, and many of our local parents especially who have kids who shop at our local Kroger here, but even I do. You can set up your preferred charity, and mine is Avenues for Success. So a portion of every purchase you make when you go grocery shopping comes right into one of those programs. So if you're a booster, you could set up for your booster support. You can set up Avenues for Success or any other number of charities that weigh on your heart. So thank you to those who made those donations. We will definitely be putting them to good use this Christmas and holiday season and for our incoming preschool families that need the help.
And thank you, little Indians. And what was the other big one?
That was a very big one, yes. All right. Ms. Campous, if you could call the roll.
And the other big one, whoever that was, thanks.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Your mic's off.
Mrs. Tanner?
Yes.
All right. Moving along to item eight. This is a committee appointment. There has been discussion about setting up a joint city and district committee so that we can have a, kind of a two-person representation from the city and a two-person representation from this board going forward to meet at certain intervals to discuss economic development. So things like, you know, the property taxes and things that are coming into the city, construction updates that might affect drop-off traffic around one of our buildings, things like that, so that we can be better partners with our city. And I'd like to open the floor to anyone who might be willing, able, and have a desire to join this committee. We'd like to start it in our January appointments schedule. So if anyone is interested in that, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and accept the creation of this committee so that you can have time to think about it for that appointment process in January. Do I have a second?
All second.
We're appointing, well, we want to build the committee. We're appointing to build the committee. But we're going to choose members to be on that committee with our regular committee cycle in January.
Thought we were doing that tonight.
If we'd like to do that tonight. It does say appoint two board members, but I thought we needed to create the committee first and do, I think that does, I think that.
Does make sense to create the committee and then appoint.
That's the order I thought we might do it in. But if, you know, that gives us a little bit of time to figure out schedules and do the full committee appointment in January when we do the rest of the appointment schedule.
I think that's smart.
All second.
We have a, I thought we had, did you not motion?
Oh, I motioned.
Okay, and Alice seconded?
Any other discussion on it?
So we're just.
Approving the creation of the committee.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we can call the roll?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tanner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item nine, hearing of the public.
Wait, are we not, we're not going to appoint somebody tonight?
Not tonight because our appointment schedule starts in January. And we don't, we haven't discussed with the city having a meeting in December, given the holidays and everything.
Okay.
That would be a lot to try to schedule around their meetings as well.
Okay.
So I would prefer to start it in January with our regular schedule.
The only question that I have is that I know, and I could be wrong, but Julie is retiring, and so is there any benefit to trying to find time in December so that Julie and Jake could be there to kind of like pass, to make the introductions there?
If the city has selected people to be on a committee like the one we're discussing right now, I have not been made aware, and I, since Brandon isn't here, I can't speak to whether or not he has received notice of who those people are.
Okay.
To make a schedule. If, I'd be happy to reach out to see if they have made that decision or plan to at maybe their early month, December meeting, and maybe we could get together, even if it's something low-key at Julie's office or something, to just introduce Jake to this committee. I'd be perfectly fine to do that. I'm sure Brandon would, I don't want to speak for him, but I'm sure Brandon would be willing to come and, and meet with them as well. But since I haven't been given notice, I don't even know who to contact about a meeting. And since we know that our schedule hits in January, it just makes sense to keep it with that, if that makes sense.
Yep.
And I agree. I don't think that we will fit a meeting in, in December. We don't have an agreement yet. I mean, that has been approved, so.
But I'd love for them to meet Jake.
Yes.
Even if they have an idea of who might serve on that committee.
Yes.
Or if they just want to send a representative to get introduced and.
Let's just all go over there and attend the meeting and be like Jake's here.
We could definitely do that, just a little bit less formal.
And that's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. For hearing of the public, let's see here. I didn't receive any papers.
Got a great audience.
We do. I would like to acknowledge that we don't have the public here, but I would like to point out that we do have some guests from Xavier University here doing an observance of our, my wonderful first-time skills picking up. So thank you. I'm so glad that people get to watch this. But thank you guys for attending and being interested in local politics and wanting to be involved at this level. I personally feel that this is the level where you get to make the most impact on your own community. Folks are always trying to get to the next highest level, next bigger thing, and honestly, the work is right here. This is where you make the most change. So thank you for your participation in this process. Thank you for having us. And I was wearing my Xavier shirt earlier today, so I was wrapping. All right. Let's move on to board reports. First up is board announcements. Does anyone have any board announcements?
Marching Band is in search of, I guess they need 20 uniforms.
Oh, yeah.
So if you can donate to give to Marching Band uniforms, that would be awesome.
Marching Band is amazing, so that's definitely a good cause right there. Those feathers are not cheap, say.
Oh, yeah. They sent out a, a really cute picture of all the band uniform parts, and it kind of looks like a paper doll and how much each one costs.
$500 per uniform.
Yeah, they're very expensive uniforms, and they are awesome. I do remember a few years ago when we got some, and I'm betting those, those get beat up on the field and.
Oh, but the reason is.
Yeah, we need more, and we're growing.
Yeah, because they have more kids.
I love it.
Yeah.
I love it.
We don't have enough uniforms for them because the band is growing. Yay.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a very good problem to have.
Oh, tonight's the orchestra concert starts in two minutes.
Okay. We also have another thing that's happening tonight and tomorrow. This is more community-related, but there's a free Lego and food for SNAP benefits happening from our partners here in Norwood. It's called the American Construction Toy Museum. They're in the shop where Greens Florist used to be on Montgomery Road. It's a, they have a bunch of Legos there. They do kids' activities and stuff like that. They spent a good portion earlier this week building bags of Lego to give away to kids in the district between 3:17. All you have to do is show up, you have to bring the kid, and you have to bring your SNAP benefit card, and you can also get a bag of food that's been donated and put together one bag per family, but each child could get a bag of Legos. They put together a ton of those. They're doing that from 5:30, which had already started, 5:30 to 8:30 tonight, if you happen to have time to go over there tonight, and they'll also be doing it again tomorrow from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And that's at 5230 Montgomery Road. It's a partnership that they have between the Norwood Brownie Girl Scout Troop and Pass the Bricks Cincinnati. So thanks to them for donating all of the food and for putting the bags together and for building the Lego bags. It's just kind of a fun thing. Again, bring your SNAP card, make sure your child is present, and you can go and get one of those until 8:30 tonight or 1:00 to 5:00 tomorrow.
And the owners, the Wellingtons, are Norwood City School parents.
Yes, they are.
Two kids in our.
Paul is fantastic. He was on, he was on the Brick Builders, the TV show, and that was really cool to see. So go check them out, and if you can't go tonight, just go support the museum. It's awesome. All right. 10.02 Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Ronan?
Thank you, Vice President Ballard. This evening, I am presenting the Nutrition Services Report now from last school year from 2425, and this is required by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. As you know, Norwood is in a consortium with other small school districts that contract with Milford Schools to get economies of scale, which is important with the, really, the high cost of food today. Milford Nutrition Services meets all federal and state guidelines. The most recent standards involve sugar restrictions in addition to the low-fat requirements and the sodium restrictions, and the menu is on a monthly cycle as seen on the screen. And as you can see, students may select three of the five items, but one must be a fruit or a vegetable. A lot of meals were served in Norwood last year. They actually said over 200,000 lunches were served last year in the district at no cost to students. Now, students may also purchase à la carte items with their electronic accounts. Summer lunches, as you can see, are also provided to all of our students in summer school, also in our summer program with avenues, and other youngsters may come up to the building for lunch. These are some of the consortium's goals for continuous improvement in the future, and we truly are fortunate to be part of this group that keeps us within the food service budget and doesn't cut into the instructional budget with cost overruns. So I want to thank the, Norwood would like to thank Milford Plus, Milford's thanking us and saying it's a pleasure to serve you, but it has been a great partnership. So thank you. That concludes that report. However, I also have some other wonderful news to share, and it is our Veterans Day celebration. We've had some great activities in our schools to honor veterans. This was really something new this year. Our middle school students wrote letters to veterans, and they did it on, as you can see, red and white paper. And then they actually mailed these letters to the veteran, and they put them together, and they made a lovely flag, excuse me, that was displayed in the middle school hallway. And in fact, one of our veterans, Charlie Tubbs, he's a Vietnam vet. He is a 1962 graduate of Norwood High School, and he sent us a lovely note back saying, the note meant so much to him, the letter from the student thanking us very, very much, and saying he's so happy that the next generation of youngsters really appreciate their sacrifice. Now, that was at the middle school. Also, Williams Avenue Elementary had a Veterans Day parade. There were some of the veterans that came to Williams and marched through the hallways. Then, for over a decade, Norwood View has been inviting veterans to a reception, a parade, and a program, and they did so again this year. We've got some great pictures of some of the veterans there. It is, the program takes place in the auditorium. The students read speeches, and I have given you a copy of the two speeches from the students who wrote wonderful things about the veterans. There's also a music program, and I have a picture of, there is the principal, Brooke Gray, in the library with some of our veterans, and they also had a wonderful slideshow. So our districts had a long, long history of honoring our veterans, and we continued the tradition again this year. So we would like to thank all of our veterans. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ronan. Next up is the Great Oaks Report, and that is also me. First of all, I'd like to give a big congratulations to Aubrey Lambert. She's one of our cosmetology students from here in Norwood. She was, she was made the Student of the Month at the last meeting for October, or excuse me, for November. We also have the opportunity coming up, the second week of December, to go to our National ACTE Conference, and I'll be attending that this year. It's going to be down in Nashville, and we are looking forward to a lot of workshops similar to what we just saw at, at our state conference. A lot of it's going to be geared towards AI and how it's going to be impacting new technologies that we're going to be working for workforce credentials. We also have an update on a certain, where is it? Hang on, I put it somewhere. Let's see here. We did have a new credentialing thing that came up. I was trying to find the photo that I took of the item. Give me one second. I'm so sorry. I have too many things in here. There we go. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce is launching a new site. It's called Field Trip. It's a video series that explores education priorities that are shaping Ohio, and each episode spotlights the success of educators and students in their local schools. The first episode that they feature is, it travels across Ohio and looks at how three different districts are building more connections between classroom learning environments and career opportunities. Some of these are hands-on experiences in industry partnerships, and some are showcasing what it means to prepare students for life after graduation, and specifically highlighting how career education is going to shape the future of Ohio's workforce. There are some new developments that are coming our way from the state that we're waiting on approval for that are going to open up some credentialing opportunities. So I'll tell you about that when I get to the legislative report, which is actually next because Brandon is not here to give a Norwood Community Television update. So let me switch gears to our OSBA legislative report. So a lot of this, there, a lot, there's a lot of overlap between the work that I do at the Oaks and what I do with the legislative items. So let me get that one pulled up. All right. So the House Committee has held its third hearing on House Bill 455. This bill would make changes to the operation of public schools and ODEW and eliminate obsolete provisions of education law. The committee accepted proponent testimony on this bill. This is the bill that I got to work on with some members of our administrative team that's also going to hopefully affect our graduation rate for our disabled. for our disabled students who have to defer their diploma. So currently, any student that defers their diploma, they don't get counted when they graduate or when they complete that program. With this provision, if the bill goes through and it's still in committee, if it goes through, those kids will finally count every time they finish a program or considered, they will be considered graduates rather than incompletes. I am so proud of that work and I hope that this one finally is the one that sticks. So I've been watching it very closely. Very yay. All right, the committee also held their second hearing on House Bill 500. This bill will be designating, this is the one I was talking about. This will be designating J O R T C programs offered by any school district as a career technical education program, which means that the committee has accepted written proposals on it that include provisions allowing it to be counted for credentialing. So we will get credit if we have a J O R T C at any of our schools or for ACTE programs that also offer J O R T C. If we do have a Norwood student who attends Oaks, we do have J O R T C available, so that can be a provision for them. I also had a big thing about those tax house bills related, and Julie already went over those, so I will skip those. And then that will conclude my report. I'll have a ton more after I go to the national conference. So that is it for now. Next up is item 10.06, the Avenues for Success Report. Mrs. Rarica?
Avenues for Success have been putting together some parent learning sessions. So if you get a text or an email, check it out. They're very interesting and you should attend. And otherwise, my kids keep bringing home floral arrangements and today I made them go to doctor's appointments and so that I didn't get any floral arrangements. So keep it up. Avenues for Success, I really love getting my flowers.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rarica. I believe that concludes all of our reports. Onto the next item, item 11, approval of future meetings. Currently, we just have our next month's regular board meeting, which is listed as December 18th, which is our regular third Thursday at 6:00 PM. And I assume that we are not doing a committee in December because of the holiday month, correct?
Correct.
All right. Did we need to meet at all early or anything else to combine committee discussions before a regular meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. To combine what?
To combine a committee meeting right before our regular meeting time to discuss any topics for our December meeting.
I don't think so, no. I think we decided November and December because of the holidays, we were just going to have the regular meetings.
I just didn't know if we had any items upcoming that might need more discussion time so we could have the committee close and reopen regular if needed.
We didn't state it in the organizational meeting, so even, even now, if we said it, it's still considered a special meeting. So if we need one, we can certainly add a special meeting and we'll advertise for that.
Okay. I motion that we accept the December 18th proposed time for our meeting next month.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Campous?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
And that moves us to our last item, adjournment. Like to motion to adjourn the meeting. Will you give a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Campous?
Oh, we do I or nay?
Hmm?
We do I or nay for adjournment, don't we?
Do what?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you again, guys, for coming. Appreciate it.